I do know, I do know that we got a couple of interesting weeks coming up in front of us. With the Ukraine and Russia deal, you know, it's, I don't know how aggressive Russia is going to get.
One of the things the Russian soldiers are doing is stealing people's, those little appliances. They're stealing like washing machines for traitors and stuff like that. So there's a lot of means out there.
She just come to Watertown and pick up all the washing machines out on the level of her, for say like cleanup.
Oh, plenty of people did, yeah. It is. Certain areas.
Okay, look, okay, yeah, that's very nice. Yeah, if you can write a check.
Lee, are we streaming?
Yeah, you're streaming.
Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Cunningham County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, April 26th, 2022. Commissioner Waterman, would you lead us today, please, in the pledge? All right, thank you. I would just like to mention, if you have a cell phone, if you could silence it, if you need to take a call, if you could step out to do that, and we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. We will take comments from individuals on items that are not on the agenda, and the two phone numbers that they can still call in is 882-6248 and 882-6297. We will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners on the agenda today?
No, no.
Nope. All right, item number four, action to approve the April 26th, 2022 agenda, motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the April 19th, 2022 minutes, so the Cunningham County Board of Commissioners, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose that motion carries. Monthly reports. We'll start out with the emergency manager director. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Andrew. Role assignment this week, huh?
Very appropriate that emergency management is on the week of severe weather preparedness week, so whoever the mastermind was behind that. So National Weather Service puts on severe weather preparedness week every, every year this week. It's April 25th through 29th, which is this week. It's just an opportunity to encourage people to think about severe weather plans, ensure that they have a plan, give them an opportunity to rehearse those plans. Each day has a different theme. So yesterday was weather alerts and warnings. Today it's severe storms, wind, hail, and lightning. Wednesday or tomorrow will be tornado safety information. They're encouraging residents to practice tornado drills on Wednesday or tomorrow, but they're not activating the emergency alert system this year. So it's kind of on local entities to determine whether or not they want to exercise tornado drills. We, we are going to do that. We are planning on setting the sirens off at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. Approximately 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. And then we coordinated with several different people to make sure that somebody's standing outside each of our, like the three sirens in Cunningham County, to make sure that they're all working properly. Just let us know if there's anything that needs maintenance. And then Thursday will be flash floods and Friday extreme heat. Kind of sticking with the, the weather theme, we had skywarn weather spotter classes over the last month, really good turnout. I mean, very good class from Kelly from the National Weather Service. We had 50 people between the two sessions. I also did PDM meetings in Cranford, Watertown, and South Shore, again, just identifying what hazards, different communities anticipated, how severe they thought they were, just so we can, can get a comprehensive mitigation plan. I participated in an airport tabletop exercise. Airport puts on, each year it was a good opportunity to just talk to, again, different entities, airport personnel, fire department, police department, sheriff's office, make sure that, like, just kind of talk through a plan, like, if, if someone were to, to happen, just, it's, it's good to exercise those. Jonathan's line, state OEM came down, just to, to check on state assets that are pre-possessed here. Like, I hadn't seen, like, the inside of the state shelter trailer and, like, our gator, the gator pump that, that they have here. They're not our assets. They'd have to get requested through state if we were to need them, but it's, it's just nice to put eyes on them and, you know, see what's, see what's around and available, like, even if it's, like, outside our plans, we can't necessarily count on it, but, you know, it's, it is here, so.
You know where they're at now.
I do.
Yeah.
And, like, just the logistics, like, the gator pump, like, the hoses are huge. They're not going to fit in pickups.
No.
So just knowing how to, to transport them and, and what's going to be required to actually put that piece of equipment to use is, I mean, far more beneficial than, than what they can show me on a PowerPoint slide or anything like that. Um, Sherry's been updating credentialing cards for local fire departments. We submitted quarterly report for LMPG. Four classes, of course. I did the independent study 242 and attended EM 102 in person. So I've now completed all of the courses that are required within my first 12 months.
Completely certified within a year.
This upcoming month, there's going to be a group of stakeholders, so. Not public health nurse, but some states.
Department of Health.
There you go. Yes, thank you. Department of Health, Department of Health reached out to us about our pod and just the, the current status of it. So we're getting Doyle County and Clark County and, and us together just to kind of determine, like, what way forward we're going to take with, with our pod. It hasn't. Yeah.
Well, going forward, so, yes, you know, like what happened with the COVID protocol stuff, the Department of Health pretty much took over. It was no longer called a pod, it was just mass vaccination. So is that their intent going forward or don't really know?
I'm not exactly sure yet. I'm, it's part of what this meeting's for. From my understanding, they use a lot of pod concepts with the mass vaccination events, but.
They funnel the funding, they channel the funding through the hospitals instead of back to the counties.
There's, yeah, there's also some sentiment if, if they didn't use the pods like the way that they were initially intended for during COVID. Like, are they actually going to, like, are they actually relevant? So.
Yeah.
So I think that, I mean, there's going to be some discussions there and, like, forgive me, I don't know, like, all of the, all of the background or, or necessarily the best way forward.
Actually, a pod concept was working, I thought, quite well.
Yeah.
I think that there was some frustration on, on our side of things when all, when that all developed, and so there was some confusion, so it will be nice to get back on the same page with them.
Well, yeah, if the Department of Health is going to channel it through the hospital, then they need, need to use their concept probably and then our, our pod.
I think what, what really happened, it was kind of a hybrid. I mean, in the end, you still set it up, set up this thing kind of like a, kind of like a pod, you know, and so maybe it's something, hopefully there, something, somebody's thinking about, you know, what, what the new concept should be.
Yes, so that we all know.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was some, there was some confusion between different agencies of people involved. That probably was what they're looking at.
Yeah. Well, I, I look forward to, again, having a meeting, participating in it and getting, you know, just a little bit different perspectives, so.
Yes.
Um, the Director of Regulatory Compliance for some carbon solutions reached out to me, so I'm gonna talk to him for, I don't know, he said a, like, half hour meeting or something, just to put a name with face. I don't know exactly what's on his agenda, but he reached out to several EMs.
Who did you say that was?
It was the Director of Regulatory Compliance, I can get the name.
Right, so would that be Dan Lederman?
Rod, Rod Dillon, I think.
Okay. So, yeah, I'd also suggest having conversations with Luke and Todd at First District, too.
Okay.
Just go over our, how that works.
Okay.
On the county side for zoning.
All right, then we have a PDM for Florence coming up, a PDM meeting, and then Sherry will be at, or we'll go to EM 103 this month, so.
Got it. Anyone have any questions?
That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Andrew.
All right. Very good, thank you, Andrew. All right, let's move on then to the sheriff's report. Morning, Brad.
We started on the first page there for monthly report for the balance sheet. Monthly balance sheet for the March of '22 started with $7,407.50. We collected $16 in copy fees, $6,552 in sheriff's fees, and $450 in warrant fees for a grand total of $7,018.00. Brings your total down to 389.50. If you look on the bottom there, I took $200 out of this account and started, I'm going to switch this account from Great Western Bank over to Reliant Bank as well. So both of my accounts over there with Reliant Bank, so that's where the other $200 is. Starting, I mean, not next month, but the month after, you'll start seeing a couple of different balance sheets. Bring both of those up there just for full transparency. You'll see everything that's happening down there. They're actually working on putting in Prodigy and the commissary this week, working on training and getting everything installed so we can start that, so. End of this week, beginning of May here, we'll be starting with commissary, so. You'll see a couple of different balance sheets here. Jump to the next page there. Lee's got it pulled up on the big screen already. You'll see for the month of March, Sheriff's Office responded to 599 cases and calls for service. 11 accident reports were completed, 73 warrants were served, 256 civil papers were served, and 3,303 transport miles. You can see they're down a little bit, so that's good. Jump down to the middle of the screen there, look at some of the jail activity. Our average daily population for March was 64.71. Our high ADP was 75, and that was on the second. Our low ADP was 57, and that was on the 12th. We had 21 people participating on the SCRAM bracelet, nine people on remote breath, 34 people on twice daily PBTs, 36 people on twice weekly U.A.I.s, zero people on the sweat patch for a grand total of 100 people on the 24/7 program for the month of March. We had 196 bookings. If you look back, that's just a little bit less than it was in March and '21 by about 15, 14, so. Scroll to the bottom of the page there, you'll see we collected $8,744.71 in out-of-county contracts, $3,700 in work release fees, $6,118.24/7 fees, and $5,138 in SCRAM fees that were collected.
Any questions on that?
Just a couple of things I'd like to add here. Gas, like you say, we all know that's been high. That's something I've been monitoring with our budget here. We have been a little bit over last month, but we're trying to manage that and make sure that we're still doing our active patrols and being out and about. We've been, some of the vehicles have been switched over to E30, some of the older vehicles that we have, we have not done so, but about half of our fleet for the newer vehicles, we've been using E30, and again, about .6 miles a gallon less than what we typically would have been getting, so it's not a huge significant difference in mileage loss, but it is working for, for our vehicles that we're, we're running it in, so. Next week is National Correctional Officers Week, May 1st through May 7th, so like to throw that out there for all our correctional officers, correctional officer week next week. I, we usually have an anonymous donor that does give us some cash to buy meals and stuff for all our, our staff and try to keep it kind of a fun week and usually get with the media and do a little media splash, maybe get some interviews of some of the correctional officers, it's kind of the life on the, the day of a correctional officer and kind of how it's a, it's a career, how the importance of the job, so.
Brad, did you remind us, how many full-time correctional officers do we have and how many part-time right now?
Ah, that's a good question. Off the top of my head.
I should have asked that question, no?
I think we have 14 full-time.
14.
That's including the chief correctional officer, now the sergeants and everybody, and then we have eight, eight part-time correctional officers, yeah.
But people have to remember, that's 24/7, 365 days a year.
That's 24/7, 365, and especially when you look at the number of inmates that we have, we've got really good staff, that does a fantastic job.
Good.
Well, thanks, Brad. That's all I got.
Thank you, Brad.
One more thing on the agenda.
Yes, we'll do your next two things, probably the fingerprinting and the Walworth County.
Okay.
So, because at 9:00, our other deal isn't until 9:30. So with that, let's move on then to item number eight, action to set the fee for fingerprinting services.
Uh, fingerprinting in the jail, for, for civil prints, that's for people that are getting jobs or employees for healthcare and doctors, et cetera, schools, they have to go and get their fingerprints done. So any civil prints, maybe whatever that may be, I'm looking to raise that from $10 to $20. Right now it's $10, spent $10 for as long as I can remember, 10-plus years. We bought that fingerprint machine last month, and we just got that up and going, so that's where I figured it'd be perfect time to.
Do you have an effective date?
I was looking to do it May 1st, just to kind of keep it in line with the months here for record-keeping and everything, so I'll make motion to approve that.
Motion by Gable for me first. Second by Johnson. Any other comments or questions about that? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number nine, action to approve a contract with Walworth County for housing of inmates.
I actually have never housed anybody for Walworth. We do have a contract with them. When our numbers are high like this, I take care of Cunningham County first and our couple of counties that are nearby here. But I did send them a contract. If our numbers do come down a little bit, if there's a little bit of room there, we would take some of their inmates, so.
Two days we haven't.
Yeah.
And so, and the price is the same as the other county.
The price is the $95, the same as all the other.
I'm making a motion to approve that.
Motion by Gable.
95 a day.
Second by Waterman.
Just a note, so Walworth is one of the counties where they had to close the jail, so kind of.
Yes.
Kind of emblematic of the problems we're having across the state, they've been running their inmates all across the whole state, trying to find homes for them, so.
Like to know what kind of an expense that is.
I, I know he's got a lot of transport officers full-time that he's been running everywhere across the state, anywhere they have roomed, housed their inmates.
Josh.
Yeah.
Kind of likes to prison or buses.
Similar, yeah. He's actually got more full-time transport guys than he does deputies on the road, so that's kind of shows a little indication of how busy they are transporting inmates.
Right. Any other comments? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Um, Luke, can we get through those four ordinances in 10 minutes? So we can start them and then we can stop and, okay, let's do that then. Let's move on to item number 10 then, second reading and action to approve. We have four different ordinances, so Luke, I will just have you read them for us. This is second reading only and no public hearings, so.
Sure, we've got, as you noted, we've got four ordinance amendments, zoning ordinance amendments. We held public hearings on them at the Joint Planning Commission and County Commissioners Meeting last Tuesday night, at the regularly scheduled Planning Commission Meeting. And the first one is ordinance number 78, and I'll handle the first reading on that and just refresh your memory on what that one is.
Second reading.
Yeah, sorry, second reading on that. Ordinance number 78 is an ordinance entitled in ordinance amending Article III District Regulations of Ordinance 65 and ordinance amending Ordinance 15 and ordinance establishing comprehensive zoning regulations for Cunningham County, South Dakota, and providing for the administration enforcement amendment thereof pursuant to STCL 11-2, 1967, and amendments thereof and for the repeal of all resolutions and/or ordinances in conflict herewith. For those that didn't catch what that's about, I don't blame you. This particular ordinance is the establishment of a Rawville Town District, something that was outlined in our land use plan as something that, hey, Rawville is zoned A, probably shouldn't be zoned A because there's other stuff going on out there. And so basically through several meetings, the Planning Commission had some input, even at discussion phases, and identified half a dozen properties from the former bar, the former Rawville Station Bar, including that property south, to allow for a town district which allows for basically the lot area that they have today, they can keep, and they don't have to apply for variances to get decaditions and things like that out there. It eliminates some review, and then also from the standpoint of the commercial use that's out there, blesses that use, and however, since it's over the wellhead protection area, there were some restrictions and basically ratcheted down commercial uses if, so people would have to ask for a public process to allow for a different type of commercial use out there.
Anyone ready to entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen. Are there any other comments or questions on this? And we will take a roll, roll call vote on these, just because that's proper procedure for adopting ordinances, so. Because if we're ready, Cindy, would you call the roll, please?
Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Van Duzen.
Aye.
And Hanson.
Aye. All right. I guess that is approved. Let's move on then to ordinance number 79.
Sure.
If you do the second reading.
Sure, second reading on that. Ordinance number 79 is an ordinance entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 3.12 APIAC for Protection Overlay District of Ordinance 65, and ordinance amending Ordinance 15 and ordinance establishing comprehensive zoning regulations for Kinnon County, South Dakota, and providing for the administration enforcement amendment thereof pursuant to STCL 11-2, 1967, and amendments thereof and for the repeal of all resolutions and/or ordinances in conflict herewith. Again, just to add some meat to the bones of what this is, this is an amendment to the AC for Protection District primarily Zone A, which is, I don't have a map handy here of that area, but it is the wellhead protection district for the city of Watertown is what that is. It's the area that would, if something goes into the soil within five years, the water treatment plan at the city of Watertown has to filter whatever that is out. And they sent a letter to the county going on over a year ago requesting that the county, after having permitted two very large gravel pits over that wellhead protection area, asking that, okay, uncle, can we not have more gravel pits over the wellhead protection district? And it's not necessarily that the folks that are running them are doing a poor job, but it does increase risk of contaminants going in there where you're doing things that they're not prepared for. And so that's where the first reading and all of that went in to make that change. The only other real, I'm going to call it substantive change, is just to reference a couple of things that frankly are being referenced in other ordinances. If, these ordinances may seem unrelated, but they actually are because every one of them makes a reference in some way, shape, or form to special permitted uses, which are now new in state law. So we also had to add any place that added, that listed conditional uses and permitted uses, we had to list special permitted uses as well, so. That's where the common link is in all four of these ordinances, but that, that's a peripheral thing. The primary thing is that gravel pits are already permitted in that area, are fine. However, that's kind of the end in that particular area.
Motion approved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other comments or questions for Luke? Hearing none. Cindy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Van Duzen.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. All right, that motion, or that ordinance passes as well. Let's move on then to ordinance number 80.
All right, ordinance 80, for the sake of second reading, is an ordinance entitled in ordinance amending Article III District Regulations in Chapter 5.12 Extended Home Occupations of Ordinance 65 and ordinance amending Ordinance 15 and ordinance establishing comprehensive zoning regulations for Kinnon County, South Dakota, and providing for the administration enforcement amendment thereof pursuant to STCL 11-2, 1967, and amendments thereof and for the repeal of all resolutions and/or ordinances in conflict herewith. This particular ordinance is still in that same vein of amendments that were discussed going all the way back to when the voters approved ordinance 65 and the promise to review certain things. One of the things that was brought up repeatedly was the regulation of home-based businesses and people saying that the process was cumbersome for things that we obviously were okay with. And so bottom line was, the board initially, this whole thing started with looking at a use that frankly, looking at the ordinance wasn't allowed, and it was logic. It was using old storage building, old farm buildings as storage, is what it was. And so the board looked at that and said, not only is that something that should be okay, frankly, if they're doing it inside, we can't tell the difference, we're not even sure we need to have a hearing on that. And so that's where it turned into, all right, first of all, we need to list the ones that wouldn't need a hearing, but may have special conditions, have those signed off, reviewed, issued. That's that special permitted use thing that I just talked about. And then the ones where they are at that bigger phase where we've had some public input historically, such as those ones that stretch out the number of employees, more than three. They're going to have stuff stored outside, but may want to have a fence out there to screen it. Those are the sorts of things that will go through a public hearing on those things. And then lastly, to expand the list of the things that, that are okay in there because before, and then also make it different by district because the one ordinance that allowed you to and said that we prefer essentially welding and tractor repair was the same ordinance that regulated home-based businesses around Lake Pelican as well, and frankly, we'd rather not have transmission flushes of tractors going on next to Lake Pelican if we can help it, so kind of had to separate those out, too, so.
There you go.
That's what's going on there.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Any other comments or questions for Luke? Hearing on Cindy, please call her all.
Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Van Duzen.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Five in favor.
All right, that ordinance passes as well. We have time to do 81, three minutes?
I think so. Our schedule's been hit.
The second reading of ordinance 81.
So ordinance 81, again, for the sake of second reading, is an ordinance entitled in ordinance amending Article II Definitions and Article IV Administration of Ordinance 65 and ordinance amending Ordinance 15 and ordinance establishing comprehensive zoning regulations for Cunningham County, South Dakota, and providing for the administration enforcement amendment thereof pursuant to STCL 11-2, 1967, and amendments thereof and for the repeal of all resolutions and ordinances in conflict herewith. Plain and simply, this is a ordinance that updates our administrative section of the ordinance and was necessitated by a bill being passed out of state legislature a handful of years ago. Honestly, it was 2019. It was 2019, yeah, it was session 2019, and the plan was to go ahead and do, double that over in 2020. And frankly, we had bigger fish to fry that year, so we kind of moved things back for a couple of years. Basically, we've been operating out of these rules since it was adopted by state law because the way state law is set up on zoning is an if-then sort of a statement. You don't have to have zoning, but if you do, you do it this way. That's kind of the way that it goes on some of this, and that's where this is. It's the, it handles the voting standard for conditional uses, which we've been following. And that's where this is. It's the, it handles the voting standard for conditional uses, which we've been following because we kinda have to because they changed it down to fifty percent, uh, sorry, a simple majority of those present in voting. It's a change. Um, the, um, it outlines a process for special permitted uses. We had special permitted uses in the ordinance, uh, but we called them different. It was permitted special uses before because we were on, we were ahead of the curve on that. Um, so anyway, that's just kind of some happy to glad and then getting the process down to what state law and, and that sort of thing. This also updates the appeals process to match state law, including, um, defining what an aggrieved person is, which was defined in state law as well. So again, those primarily were just to update us and get us back into, um, sync with what state law had been updated to. And probably the only thing, the only other point that I would note is, um, the expiration of a conditional use permit also had to be updated because again, um, that outlined specifically, you do have the ability to, the board does have the ability to say issue an extended, um, deadline. However, it says at a minimum that if there's an appeal, uh, to court of a decision that the, um, expiration period is measured from the final appeal in court, and that comes again, repeated on state law.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Alright, motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Any other comments or questions?
I just make a quick comment. During the, during the planning zoning meeting, I, I, I offered an amendment that was added to this, just so people understand, I'm still fine with what's, what's in here now. I would have liked to see a bit more, was dealing with the composition of the, the, uh, Planning Commission, but just so people know that I, what's in here now is good. I just hope to add, I, I'd wanted to add a bit to it, but.
Alright. We ready to vote? Cindy, call the roll, please.
Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Van Duzen.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. So that ordinance eighty-one passes as well, is approved.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Absolutely.
You can stick around. Okay, very good. Um, well, it is nine thirty, so we will move on to, then to item number seven. Discussion with Richland Township Property Owners Regarding Township Road One Sixty- seventh Street. Um, I'm just gonna call the highway superintendent and have him just to listen in. Oh, so, um, if those folks would want to come forward and we'll have you state your name and then we'll kind of get started. I'll just go, see if I can get him on. Good morning.
Morning Mitch. Good.
Uh, Mitchell Kane on behalf of the Whitneble family, wish you all a good day.
Yeah, just give her a second here. Yeah. Yeah, screams out on YouTube, so, otherwise they can't hear you. Morning folks, thanks for coming.
I bet stool right there can be lowered. Maybe not all the way down, but. Yeah, just pull that in.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so Mitchell Kane on behalf of the Whitneble family, Wisher family, and also just the general public. Um, we are here to discuss some of the concerns that they had with the Richland Township. Um, Doug Wisher's property and, uh, the Whitneble property are situated, um, on the north side of One Sixty- seventh Street, um, just to the west of town. Uh, the, that road is designated as minimum maintenance road, and that was because for many of the years preceding, uh, the recent history, um, Horseshoe Lake Road was the main access to those properties. However, uh, in the last three to four years, I believe, the northernmost portion of Horseshoe Lake Road has fallen, um, under some submerged water by about two to three feet. Uh, they have requested, um, on numerous occasions for aid or help and basically either, um, building up that corner to create access to the properties or to, uh, remove the minimum maintenance designation of One Sixty- seventh Street. And that is because One Sixty- seventh Street is obviously a minimum maintenance road, receives less maintenance than, um, the other highways in the area. So, uh, for many months of the year, that road is completely unusable, impassable. Um, and in fact, uh, the Wisher family, invitees, agents, postal services, things like that have to, um, crop, excuse me, cross, uh, neighboring properties to simply access their property. And, um, in fact, I do believe that the Wisher family also, you leave a vehicle even on the other side of the road.
Well, for emergency, though, I can take a boat across the water if I had to, you know?
Right, so, um, he, he would fall under what I believe, uh, S D C L thirty-one twenty-two one, which would create him, or which designates an isolated tract, uh, because there is no passable highway, um, to his home, um, or to the residential property. And then in addition, the Whitneble family desires to build a home, um, on the property, uh, along One Sixty- seventh Street. And again, during many of the months of the year, whether it be spring, uh, mainly spring and the winter is when it is completely submerged with snow, washouts, um, poor conditions, and, and I just simply can't get to those areas. Furthermore, um, for the minimum maintenance designation, there are, there is land, um, under the C R E P contract, uh, which allows public access for hunting, fishing, things of that nature. Um, and those activities obviously primarily fall in the fall and winter months. Um, and when we went out there this fall and winter, again, those areas were inaccessible unless you had come from, I believe it was the, the road to the north and then had to essentially boat across the, that, I think it's, uh, stink, like, or whatever, whatever body of water is it by?
Horseshoe.
Horseshoe, okay, horseshoe, on the north side, so. Um, basically what we're here asking for today is for a review of that area and again, they, you know, these individuals have reached out to the township and we've, you know, to no avail. Um, there, there should be a road which allows access to, uh, these properties, obviously. They, there's a family and a residence that's already established and one that desires to do so. Um, and so with the isolated tract designation, uh, technically the gov, the governing law states that, um, let's go. So.
Which statute are you in?
Uh, the whole, all of the laws that I would reference here are in Title Thirty-One, but this specific isolated tract designation is Thirty-One Twenty-Two One, S D C L Thirty-One Twenty-Two One. Um, and it basically says, every owner of an isolated tract of land containing at least ten acres not touched by a passable public highway, so passable is the key word here for us, or smaller tractable land containing at least five acres used or intended to be used in good faith or in whole for residential purposes, that would create the Whitnebles', um, concerns, is entitled to an easement or right of way across adjacent lands to reach public highway, which easement or right of way may be secured as provided for in this chapter, so that's typically how we go about this. An isolated tract is further defined as an area which is either inaccessible by motor vehicle because of natural barriers. Um, so again, that would be our submerged, submerged water or the, uh, snow covering from the minimum maintenance road. From all of the land owned by owner, by the owner of the isolated tract or such an area which is not touchable by a passable public highway, which is in use for or reasonably used for motor vehicles. A tractable land adjoining a section line right of way for at least six, sixty-six feet is not an isolated tract if a passable road can be built and you joining section. We already have a road, it's just not passable. So what we're asking for is that either the Horseshoe Lake Road, um, that northernmost portion be built up to allow access so that way he no longer has to essentially boat across the water to, uh, to his vehicle. Or that the minimum maintenance road, um, be removed, that minimum maintenance designation be removed, and we just create an actual road that's well-maintained, gravel, graded, things like that, because again, on either side it creates access. And one could argue that both need to be done because the, uh, minimum maintenance designation to me, um, that's only for internet travel, things like that. Well, we have many, uh, individuals, invitees, residences, properties, public, um, access properties along that road. So, um, essentially with the minimum maintenance designation, i- it's completely inaccessible, as I mentioned, to that, that public hunting and fishing ground. And, um, to me, that's just limiting the public's access and the purpose for those credit contracts, things like that.
Is that, um, I'm sure, quick questions. You ma, you mentioned a statute early on, was that the same one that you cited? I just didn't catch what you said.
Yeah, S D C L Thirty-One Twenty-Two One is the statute that, uh, regards isolated tracks. And then if you want to go further, so the county obviously can designate, uh, so Thirty-One Twelve Forty-Six is the minimum maintenance roads, and that's what allows the Board of County Commissioners to designate any road as a minimum maintenance road. Um, to go further, Thirty-One Thirteen One Point One, um, discusses the level of maintenance that those roads would require, obviously, you know, at the, the, what, what saying am I looking for? But basically, the, it's a lower level of maintenance, which allows for, you know, the money, uh, uh, snow-covered roads.
I'm sorry, those two statutes again, so Thirty-One Twelve Thirty-Six, and then what was the second one?
Thirty-One Twelve Forty-Six is the, um, statute that allows the board to create minimum maintenance roads. And then Thirty-One Thirteen One Point One, um, is just the designation of minimum maintenance. Okay.
And the right to access is Thirty-One Twenty-Two One.
Essentially all within Title Thirty-One, all the statutes that I've kind of referenced or thought through, and so, um, and, and to go, you know, further is we have, uh, Thirty-One Thirteen Nineteen, which is, you know, the county maintenance and repair of the mail routes. Um, so I know that mailing and postal services are an issue. They've also raised concerns for if any emergency medical problems were to occur during some of these months in which you couldn't access these properties, that would create a concern. Um, so we're again, just basically looking for a passable public highway to be built on two roads that are already there, um, to just essentially either be renovated or improved to allow access to these residential properties.
I have a question. Uh, Whitneble, is that the new property that's being proposed? Is, is that you?
Yeah.
Where are you, where are you, exactly where you propose to build this, or what are you, what are you looking at it? At a, on, near a road or passable road, or can you tell me where, what parcel of land are you gonna build that on? Are you proposing it, would like to build it on?
Uh, be that forty acres there, um, if there are any, it'd be on the west side of Wisher.
Section.
On the north side.
Section, section five?
Yeah, absolutely.
Section five.
This is USA three fifty.
I, I do have a question, uh, question. And conclude this week, we've been in a talk, we have a couple of different occasions, but just to clarify for the record, you did buy that land full knowing that that road was not passable, right?
Right, knowing One Sixty- seven, but when I bought that land too, talking to the township members, there was plan on fixing that corner, or a process of buying some more ground, and if not, going on One Sixty- seven to improve that road so Doug can get out.
So you, you going away from that, you're asking the county to overstep the boundary, or to overstep the township and changing rules to put in this.
Well, essentially what we're asking is that the county review the minimum maintenance designation, because I think all, all, you know, the Whitneble's property aside, I know it should be designated as minimum maintenance, perhaps seeing how much travel should be out there because the C R E P contracts were created to allow public access to these grounds. Well, for the main portion of the year, nobody's going out to that property to go hunting in June. They would like to go out there in October, November, December, January. With that minimum maintenance road covered with two, three feet of snow, it's kind of like a rolling hill essentially, so it drifts. You can only make it about a hundred yards off that main highway. I don't, I don't remember which highway that is to the west of One Sixty- seven. Um, the area they're possessing, so, so we're asking that in, in some nature, then again, just for the county to, yes, review the fact that there is no passable highway to the Wisher property. Um, he's an individual, the family's paid taxes, they're, uh, they have every right to use and access of their residence. I mean, clearly, if, if he were to attempt to sell or, or perhaps even mortgage his property at its current state, it's gonna be viewed as significantly less than if it were easily accessible. Uh, because it's gonna be difficult to sell a property when you tell the, you know, the purchasing individual that the only access to this place is through the boat. Or of course, in the winter time when it freezes open, uh, but that's just dangerous to most people. So the township has been called upon numerous times throughout the years, um, not even just necessarily in the last six, eight months. Um, the township's been called upon for how long, uh, requesting help or buildup, and, and each time, in fact, there was paperwork filled out to address the submerged Horseshoe Lake Road, but apparently it was never submitted. Um, and so these individuals have basically reached their end with the township. I mean, yeah, I, outside of sort of negotiation discussions, but they've been offered extensive help and even services to take care of some of the things that they're requiring.
Yeah, and, and we've had a, uh, we've had a conversation about that and he said, well, what's my, what can I do? And I said, well, it sounds like you're gonna have to require some counsel.
Right.
And take the next step. Do you have something to put in on this?
I'm, I'm aware that there were lots of conversations in the past, from my understanding, the road went under in two thousand and nineteen. Um, and, uh, my predecessor opened up a second window for, uh, mitigation project to try and help.
Yeah.
But, uh, whether that was because township officers, I don't know. Ultimately, it didn't get submitted at the corrupt, it's, uh, if it's, there's land swap. It was going to resolve it, but that kind of fell through, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure all of the details on it, but there's been several, several avenues attempted, uh, in order to solve the issue, um, and ultimately, uh, it just had, doesn't have a deal.
So basically, I think, uh, today is just discussion. Um, this is something we will have to be in touch with our legal counsel as well to see what, you know, what those steps would be. Um, unless any of you have any other comments that you want to add to this or any of the other commissioners, I guess it's, you know, more for just information today.
Correct, I mean, essentially what we're asking for today is that, uh, the board selected an individual to go and review this area. That's pursuant to some law in here that we can make that request, um, and to have an individual actually go through and view these roads and the issues that we have present. And what he actually just mentioned, there was some agree, not agreement, but there was some discussion about some land changing hands to allow, uh, the Wisher family access. I believe those discussions have terminated entirely, and that's what brought us here.
What, what the deal was is, well, I don't like saying anything bad about anybody, but the township, like, three years ago, we had, uh, John Hyde from Emergency Management on a phone and, well, we as well have a meeting. And the year before the, you know, female was involved, you know, to fix the road when it just started going underwater. And, uh, one of the township members admittedly said he just dropped the ball on it. And then uh, John Hyde said that he couldn't reopen it. And again, he just dropped the ball on it. And, you know, at the same meeting, they said that, uh, they told the township that, uh, there needs to be signage up because the road is, you know, underwater. And Rick Webber, when he left, he says, I'm gonna go over the signs now. I remember big, he kept saying that. And then, uh, it's three years later, after, after Merlin was so mad, they finally put signs up. That was just last fall. Yeah. I was making a deal with Merlin, he's the, the owner of the, the form that's underwater. And, uh, I was, uh, excuse me, I'm not used to talking in public.
That's okay, you're doing fine.
You're fine.
Keep going.
But anyway, last spring, I made a deal with Merlin that I was gonna trade him five acres of good hayland to use that corner that was underwater. And through the summer, oh, there's a lot of traffic on that, like, every day, somebody's coming down that road. When they come down. When they come down, they get to the water and they look for a road, oh, there's a path, so they take it. And through the summer, Merlin just, he gets madder and madder because people are trash wrecking. So now, he, well, he dug holes in the ditch so nobody could go across. And for some unknown reason, he's really mad at me. And, you know, the whole deal, you know, he, he wasn't going to train landing. And now I can't even walk, I just landed, he'll turn me into a traffic taxi. And that's actually the township's fault. Everything got so bad. And like right now, for the past three years, there have been three mud holes. And the township, you know, didn't, don't do nothing. But you can go on, look at all the minimum maintenance areas in the other part of the township. All the bad bugs, you got all kinds of oversized rock in and the gravel over it.
So. That's section of one sixty-seventh west of four forty-second, Doug, between horse, horseshoe lake road, one sixty-seventh. That whole stretch along there is minimum maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's township jurisdiction right now, is that what we're saying or?
Well, the county has restored it to designate.
Right, right.
Yes, as of now, it is under township jurisdiction. Um, I've been on a minimum road, minimum maintenance road, went and looked at this. So you were trying to obtain a piece that, that was to be called, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to, you know, and I was just going to give it to the township. Easily go the short road there.
As you can see, this is kind of a complicated, emotionally infused issue, um, to the point where people are in it, worried about changing why and just to simply get access to the property. This is, this is more than just a small issue.
That, Madam Chair, if, if my memory would serve me correct, we had a problem with some roads at another township. Was it, and we had some litigation involved with that? Wasn't that determined that the state, that the county was not to interfere with township business? And township is not to interfere with county business?
Yes, I think that was on a road vacation of wondering who had the authority to do that actually. At that time, it was a county that did it. So yeah, that was kind of a different issue.
Just going from memory, it's been quite a while.
Right, that was on that one. But, um, like I said, um, we will need to discuss this with the highway, our, our, um, legal counsel, you know, and, and see what that process is or what, if anything, you know, how that can.
Should we set a reminder, or not a reminder, another date or another to review, I mean, the process or the?
Um, right.
Or another agenda?
Right, because, um, I just don't know how long it will take to, I don't know if I can ask, um, Rick, do you have any idea or do you want to say now, like, uh, is there any kind of a timeline that you think, you know, to review some of this?
Well, like I said, you have to talk to the state's attorney's office and see what, what they have options on that clause. And, uh, as far as, you know, because basically it's, it's a township issue right now. So there's a process that this all has to go through before it becomes a county issue.
Yes.
So.
So, yeah, we'll need to, I can't give you probably a timeline right now. I guess we need to have some of those discussions with our state's attorney's office. And, um, when we get a better handle on it or whatever, we can probably be in touch with you.
Can I ask who has the authority to remove the designation of minimum maintenance road? With that, I'll be there now.
Could I, could I have it speak up just a little bit or pickles?
Sorry about that. I kind of forgot there was a microphone. Uh, I just asked the question if, so the county commissioners designate the minimum maintenance roads. I want to, my question was who then has the authority to remove the designation? I don't believe I see that statute, perhaps through more research I could discover that. But, um, that's essentially where we have this township-county issue. Uh, because yes, from the west, we would take the position that that would be county. From the south, AKA horse lake road, uh, that would be township.
I have someone here, Travis Paulson is with the State Association of Townships. So he can probably answer that question for us. If you, if you want to come forward, Travis.
Sure.
And just state your name.
Travis Paulson, I represent the South Quarter Association of Townships for this area. So, um, that to answer your question, that designation is made at township level and it's, and it can only be done once a year in county. Which is in first, uh, two, three, four, so that designation can only change once a year by the township.
It, you know, you back on that a little bit. So basically, my understanding and the swipe, the state's attorney involved, but basically, uh, to put it into layman's terms, the state picks which roads are under their own authority. The county, the county and city choose to pick which ones are under their authority. So that one's true, the lucky ones that get to pick whatever's left. And so that's what's left situation. And like Rick mentioned, like it's been noted, there's a process that we're going around. Fans outlining here that would, county needs to talk to these guys about.
Yes, okay. With that, we will do some research on our end as well and be in touch with you as we get to that point that we can hopefully get, you know, something resolved, one way or another.
I think, yeah, Madam Chair, if I can, I, I think it would probably only be fair to maybe give them a timeline. I, I know that's hard, but so that they're not standing out a month or whatever, I, you know.
Well, road designations can only happen once.
Yeah, at the end of the meeting, that's the first.
So, right, so, uh, let's just, we need to just find out. Our legal counsel and with townships, I mean, I don't know if there's something that can happen in between times that they would, like they, you know, vacated, I don't know what that process would be, so it's going to take a little.
Yes, Madam Chair, and some people here are looking for a timeline. Would it be fair to say within three months, somewhere in the three-month range or four-month range?
Yes, I guess, hopefully sooner, but hopefully sooner, but yes, I guess it just, it's hard to say what's going to be all involved. We may need some information from you as well. So do you have a card or something you could leave with us? Or you can email, I guess, we maybe can get your information that way.
Or we already have this kind of.
I, I know, Matt, I know.
Okay, well then.
We'll get over.
If we have that, okay, yes, no, I mean, it's something we'll want to determine, yeah.
With questions that I, or that you support.
Luke, go ahead.
Just, and I don't, if you don't have any finding, or probably, the largest point would be to instruct the state's attorney's office.
And have that.
To work together in the next couple of weeks, you have.
There you go.
So if they're on the same page, and I may be teetering, reporting you.
Okay.
Once that's done. Yeah, that said, I don't know.
Yeah, it's hard to say what their options. All right.
Thanks for coming, Ms. Wisher.
We'll just do it as, as we can and try to get something worked out.
Have an end.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rick.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye. All right. We will move on then to item number eleven, action to authorize Lutheran Church of Our Redeemer to conduct Sunday worship services at Memorial Park.
Move to prove.
Motion Johnson, second by Waterman. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, that motion carries. Item number twelve, action to restate national, our nationwide retirement plan documents per IRS requirements.
And what this amounts to is a resolution that we need to pass, which I will have to do today. It's just to restate a supplemental retirement plan, uh, um, that's offered to employees. And per IRS regulations, we need to do this once every six years. The problem is, the retirement company has sent emails to Brenda, Myron, and Lee to do an electronic signing. And I don't know if any of you have gotten them.
I have, I wasn't sure if it was like scamming.
I know, I, I, and so I didn't know. So, yeah.
On the list.
I will have the retirement company send, um, the emails to you and just be on the lookout for them.
Well, I can go back and find mine and do it. I just didn't think, okay.
I mean, that's fine, you can, you know.
Wouldn't hurt to resend it.
I will have it resent to you.
Yeah, they need a fresh one.
Yep, all right, okay. But for now, we do have to pass the resolution, which, thought I had it ready here. I know I've prepared.
So, uh, while you're doing that, I'll make the motion to, uh, to pass this resolution and authorize us three to electronically.
You are the appointed trustees for this plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Gable. I'll second that motion.
So that is my discussion question, Madam Chair, was, okay, is this the same, this is not the same thing as the state supplemental?
This is a nationwide supplemental.
We have one employee who uses this plan.
So we need to do it.
Been here for a long time. There were other employees at one time who were involved in it, but currently we have one employee who is still, uh, using this plan. So therefore, that's why we need to take some action.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any other comments, questions?
I would encourage that one employee to take a hard look at the South Quarter Supplemental Plan.
I don't know if you can legally say that right here.
I'm just suggesting that, and, uh, I'm not promoting that, but it's for the good of the employee.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number thirteen, action to approve the county and consolidate Board of Equalization minutes. And those are in the packet.
Make a motion to.
So I'll need, um, separate action first for the county proceedings.
I'll make a motion to approve the county proceeding minutes.
Second by Waterman, did you have any comments, questions, additions, corrections that you see? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right, and then the county's consolidated board.
I'll make a motion to approve the consolidated board minutes.
Gable, second by Johnson, any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, that motion carries also. All right, item number fourteen, I'll probably have Todd come up. Yeah, there you go.
We do.
Okay.
Well, it's very interesting, Commissioner. Yeah, it's very interesting.
Yes, it is.
Um, I'm here to discuss the, uh, MOU for, I, I don't know if you have a copy of it.
Yes, we do.
Um, basically, it's the MOU between, um, the county and, um, the community transit here in Watertown, uh, about the rides for wellness.
For minutes, because the county is not mentioned at all in this MOU.
It's just in the signature block.
Yes, yes.
We are not, so if the state's attorney has, she has looked at it.
She's approved it.
Okay, because we're not mentioned in this MOU except for the signature line.
I think it's a generic, yeah, I don't know, it's a signature because they use this in the other counties too, but I don't know, we did send it through to her.
Becky and she came back and she said the.
She doesn't see any issue with it.
The MOU looks fine, which is what I think.
Okay, okay, that's, that's the only question I had, right?
When, when I looked at it, you know, it talks about the, the, until the grant funds are no longer available. So I don't think that makes us liable for anything from that standpoint, at least when I read it. And to me, it's talking about how, um, providing patient information across, you know, to, you got to give them their phone number and where they're going to go, where they're going to get picked up. So that information, basically, that's where I look at it. So, and I don't know exactly, um, we're talking with Brenda, if, if you want me to sign this or if this should be signed by somebody.
Chair, we typically do MOUs by the chair, but I said, we'll have that discussion, that's something we can just change.
As long as we, yeah, I think as long as we, as a board approved, whoever signs it, I guess that would probably.
What you're actually doing is approving the MOU, so, um, yeah, whoever.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, we're okay with Todd signing it then or what, how do you want that?
Yeah, whoever.
Okay, all right, all right then. Any other comments, questions, discussions?
Sure, so, so basically, what, what summarizes what, what Todd just said is this is to make sure that he followed, you know, to say you have all these waiver guidelines and things like that and HIPAA stuff, I'm guessing it's related to. Uh, so do you have, you have access to the software that they're talking about here and?
I, I, I do not as of yet, uh, the la, the first one that I did here last month. Basically, I contacted their, um, scheduler and gave her the information. She contacted the individual and then that went from there.
So it's currently a manual process itself.
As of, as of right now, yes.
Right.
Uh, one little bit, uh, bit of good news, or do you guys have?
We'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, that motion carries, okay.
Uh, two things, uh, I heard about our vehicle, um, we should have it here next week as far as that. And, um, I talked with our HR and we will be making a, uh, we have a selection for the Deputy Veteran Service Officer and we'll be making an offer to that individual tomorrow.
Good.
All right, very good.
Have a great day.
You too, thank you. All right, item fifteen, action to approve abatement applications.
Uh, we have three abatement applications. These are all being applied for by the Florence School District who purchased some land from private owner and now the land, uh, is tax exempt. These are full abatements. The first one is in the amount of sixteen dollars and thirteen cents. The second one, two hundred and twenty-four dollars, and the third one, seventeen dollars and seven cents, located in the Florence School District.
Move.
That's my Johnson, second by Gable. Any comments, questions about that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, that motion carries. Item number sixteen, action to approve claims for payment.
Uh, we have two kinds of claims today, we have the normal end of the month. To prepare and the first one is the one that Troy will probably receive itself.
Correct, nine-one-one.
This is to the Watertown City Finance Office in the amount of twenty-two thousand eighty dollars and forty-one cents. And they are for the February nine-one-one surcharge collections.
Make a motion.
Motion by Gable.
So low.
Second by, uh, Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, that motion carries. Move on to the rest.
All right, so the next one is payment to the South Quarter Department of Health. It is first and second payment for our contract with the state for community health nurse services in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the third one is reimbursement to an employee in the auditor's office who purchased some folders for our election, if, our election supplies in the amount of seventeen dollars and ninety cents payable to Daddy Melville. Uh, first interstate bank visa for the Emergency Management Office for travel to Fort Peere and supplies from Batteries Unlimited, total is three hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Another visa, uh, claim, visa of ReliBank, I believe this one is for the, uh, Welfare Office who purchased, um, some items for the, uh, community, through the, under the Community Health Worker Grant, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twelve cents for office equipment. Uh, second visa of ReliBank for the Sheriff's Office in jail for supplies and travel expense, three thousand five hundred and two dollars and twenty-two cents. Okay, and that's it. Those will come next.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to be those.
Second.
All right, motion by, uh, Gable, second by Van Duzen, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right, we have one more.
Uh, the third set of claims is the April salary claims in the amount of six hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman, comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right, we'll move on then to, um, seventeen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Nothing today for seventeen or eighteen.
All right, we'll move on then to nineteen, action to approve travel requests.
Uh, travel request for the Director of Equalization and one of the appraisers to attend a district meeting uh, in the month of May and for the welfare director and the, um, the new person that was hired under the grant to attend the twenty-twenty-two CHW Annual Conference. This is a one-day travel for that one.
Move to prove.
By Johnson, second by Gable, any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Oppose, that motion carries. All right, item number twenty, public notices. Possible quorum of commissioners to be in attendance. Does anyone have anything that you can think of?
I'm speaking at Rodeo Thursday, but I'm not, you're, you're a member, but that's.
Yes.
That's just.
Yep. All right, not hearing any other, um, possible quorums. Uh, do we have any old business? How about new business? Sorry, do you want to mention something?
Uh, sure. Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, I had this printed out and I forgot, so thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll just let you do that.
Um, the, um, Rick Harley has informed me that, um, he would like to share our road hall agreement with other counties that have reached out to him in reference to that, and he's just looking for commission approval to do that. If, uh, anybody doesn't have a problem, I told him it would probably be okay, but we wanted to run it by.
Just kind of a general consensus.
Yeah.
You know, to share that.
To share the language, so like all.
Yeah.
The road hall agreement that we use for, with the banner prepared for us for the wind towers, I guess. I don't have a problem. Uh, they, they reimbursed us, so, you know, it's.
Do we need to take action on?
I don't know.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. We can't. So I mean, if it's something we can put. We can put it back, we can put it on.
Is that something we need to take action on?
If it's a general.
It's just if we're okay with him sharing it, we should be okay, right?
If you're not gonna charge anybody for anything.
No, we're not.
That's not fair.
Yeah, okay. Very good. All right, do we have anything for the open?
Uh, just, just to inform the, the other board members, this past week, uh, Brenna and I and the welfare department did uh, look at another property in, um, reference to moving, um, from their current site simply because they're running out of room. And, uh, we're waiting for a report from, uh, welfare department as to, they were gonna work together with the owners of the property and bring the numbers to us and so on and so forth. So, there's been some activity there. And, uh, this is the second property that we looked at.
Okay.
So. So it'll be on the agenda at some point when they get to that.
I, I got to see the, I just happened to be at another meeting with welfare, the sheriff and, uh, state attorney about, I guess, you know, the programs in the intersection with the criminal justice system, but afterwards, they were showing that property to the brothers and sisters behind bars, representatives. So, could be, you know, one of the other things in addition to spaces, they need for more, uh, partition space for privacy, so people they can discuss their specific cases in private with, uh, people from the office.
And we will not be doing anything with the veteran service office. He'll be staying put. It's just our, uh, welfare offices growing out of their space, so. All right, um, I believe we have a reason to go into executive session, personnel and legal counsel, um, no contracts, contracts.
Mine's, mine's personnel, I've requested.
Yeah, so I would look for a motion to go. Uh, there will be nothing, um, no, um, I never can think of the right word for that. Any action, no action afterwards. Motion by Johnson.
I'll second.
Second by Gable. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're in executive session.
Thank you.